Ready?
Yeah.
Alright, you ready in a minute? Fire.
I'm ready.
Ready? Thank you everybody for coming this evening. This is the board meeting for board number fifteen for Leopoldama. And we want to go ahead and get started right away on this agenda. So the first thing that we're going to do is we are going to strike agenda item two, four, and five. And then we're going to go ahead and break directly to Honolulu Fire Department. Is there anything from Honolulu Fire Department?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry. Hi, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of the board. My name is Stu Williams. I'm a fire captain at the Kalihai Fire Station. I'll be presenting this month's statistics for you all. In the month of August, there were five structural fires, three wildland brack fires, five nuisance fires, no cooking fires, and fifteen activated alarms. As far as other emergencies, we had two hundred and thirteen medicals, four motor vehicle collisions with pedestrians, eleven motor vehicle crash collisions, no mountain rescues, two ocean rescues, and four hazardous materials incidents that we responded to. For this month, our fire safety tip involves evacuation planning. So HPT recommends that in the event of an emergency, be prepared with an evacuation plan. Create your plan with all members of your family, household, in mind. Keep in mind those with limited abilities, children, elderly, and pets. We'd like to remind you to identify possible exits and escape routes, predetermine a safe meeting place, and always choose the escape route that is safest. Think about various scenarios and strategize how to use them. Review and practice the plan often. We also recommend assembling an emergency supply kit, remembering to pack your port and documents, medicines, and necessary pet items. Remember to stay calm, stay informed, and stay alert. For more information, visit fire.honolulu.gov. That concludes my presentation for this month.
Okay, is there any questions from the board members? Any questions from the community about for the fire department? I just have one thing, another question. The, I know that they are supplying Narcan because of the FENON. Have you guys have enabled or was that, is that something that you guys are using regularly or starting to see the use of it just because of the population that use it?
You know, so you correct, carrying Narcan on the trucks. All of our trucks have them. Yeah, we're seeing an increase in the use of Narcan already. Yeah, we're carrying up guys, you know, nothing, not without even reaching outside of the station. Just hearing of guys using it more and more often. I myself haven't used it yet, but yeah, it's, they're getting used on the trucks, yeah.
Okay. Um, yeah, that's all I have for Honolulu Fire Department. So thank you so much. I actually think I have I didn't want to ask you guys something offline, but I'll go ahead and share that with you. I think I have your guys' contact info in there.
Yes. Thank you very much. Good evening.
Evening. Um, okay, Honolulu Fire, Honolulu Police Department, District One.
Good evening, Chair, and everyone in attendance. Lieutenant Arnold Segusi representing the District One Community Responsibility. Thank you for your guys' time and patience. The information I'm providing for you guys tonight will be the statistics for your particular area. For more statistical information, you guys can go to the HPD public website at www.honolulupd.org. The statistical information for the month of August twenty twenty-three is as follows. Motor vehicle thefts was four. Previously to that was four. Burglaries is two. Previous to that was two. Thefts, six. Previous month was three. U M Vs or car break-ins is seven. Previous to that was five. Assaults were six. Previous to that was zero. Six assaults, graffiti, and drug cases were all zero for this month, and also zero for the previous month. There was two hundred eighty-nine calls for service for your particular area. The previous month was three hundred and one. So calls for service for the area remain about the same. There are no criminal breaches for us to report at this time in regards to the District One area responsibility. The month of September is actually National Suicide Prevention Month. Please let us be aware of signs of depression and take notice of life triggers that may cause someone to hurt themselves. I posted several numbers on the chat for everyone to see. I have utilized these numbers personally while on the job, and they have provided me excellent advice and proper measures in dealing with someone who's thinking about suicide. The safety tip for the month of September will be pedestrian safety since we just got done with the last major holiday of Labor Day, and summer vacation is pretty much over, guys. There will be more pedestrian traffic in the area of schools and bus transit areas. We are asking our community members to leave early and avoid rushing. Rushing causes everyone to become complacent in regards to safety. Drivers, also please, please reduce speeds in the areas of intersections, especially mid-block crosswalks. At this time, I'm going to yield back the rest of my time and take any questions from the board members and the public attendees.
Okay, any questions from the board? Go ahead.
Um, so
Angela, this is, you know, wanting to hear your from District Five. This is five of the larger reports.
So, Officer Lieutenant, I was wondering, actually, just a follow-up to your question about the Narcan and also to address what you said in your address to us. So Narcan and suicide. Narcan is distributed by Weyde Health and Heart Reduction Center. And they did an international overdose parade at the state Capitol, the state legislature. And, you know, if there are ways that HFT and HPD can collaborate to really support mental health, right, in regards to the Narcan overdoses and for suicide, that'd be really good. Because we want to see community organizations supporting each other. And also, if we keep being informed of what are the signs of suicide, what are the signs of drug usage?
I have a dear question.
Yeah, so if there's any opportunities for collaboration, that'd be great, thank you.
Anybody else? Any questions from the community? Okay. Uh, go on. Uh, so, I just have a comment. First comment is, I've seen a lot of the presence of your officers in District One, Sector One. So that's, that's very welcome for that area. So I just wanted to give you clues on that, on that comment-wise. Questions? Have we seen an uptick of individuals that are, I guess, moving or shifting around, if you will, from the different areas or encampments or whatnot? I've been hearing a lot when it comes by the DHS area right across from the whole park. And it's to the extent where basically a person in a wheelchair can't go through stuff in terms of ADA compliance. I know that that's, you know, not everything you're working on, but is that something that you guys can kind of look into? Because that's obviously going to come down side of people who are on wheelchairs.
Presently, at this point in time, the department is being sued by the ACLU, so I'm going to have to defer any type of answering any questions in regard to the residentially challenged persons situation in our particular area. We're going to defer that to the Chief and to City and County Court Counsel. However, if there's any type of criminality in regards to these homeless encampments that are occurring, please continue to call. We'll go on and send officers to that location and we'll address the criminality at that point in time, yeah.
And is this any reference to, is this, I don't know if you know the answer to this, but is that in reference to California's case with the ACLU that you struck down with the Ninth Circuit? And then how that affects here, or is it the Martin case that's, that was prior?
I, I'm not really fully versed in that lawsuit at this point in time, but however, we fall under the Ninth Circuit, so I would not put it past it that it's kind of sort of the same thing. However, yeah, with regards to the upcoming lawsuit coming about, we just got to defer some of the answers to it.
I understand, I understand. Thank you very much for our due diligence, be safe out there.
Absolutely, you guys have a great night, thank you.
Thank you. HPD District Five?
Hi, I'm Lieutenant Tony Hong from District Five, Kalihai. Going over the stats for August twenty twenty-three. Burglaries, there are twelve compared to eight. Motor vehicle thefts, eighteen compared to twenty-one. Thefts, there are fifty-three in August compared to forty-two in July. Car break-ins, there are fourteen compared to fifteen. The total calls for service for the month of August was three thousand one hundred and fourteen compared to three thousand and thirty in July. I have nothing else to share. If there are any questions, I'm available to answer them.
If there's somebody whose things on there, just tell the, just put a new button on there, it's a lot to go there. Do you have a question, please?
Hi, Evelyn Cullen here. Address four five four Wyomamilo Road. C and B Trucking uses a bike lane as their parking. I travel that road between three and four P M. daily, and they have their personal vehicles. So that was part of the Hart Street Wyomamilo Road building better Oahu, and they're done with the replacement of the sewer line. So this is for the city, and the city needs to repaint the bike lane there. Because that's what it actually is, it's a bike lane, and they're using it as well. Parking, so I call HPD at least four to five times a week since they moved in, maybe about a month ago.
Yeah, I think that brought up last time, and one of the other city agencies was supposed to try to work on that. Maybe if they're on tonight, maybe they can help with that. But yeah, if you do call nine one one, we will send officers to check, and if there are any violations, we'll address it appropriately.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Go ahead.
Hey, Officer, um, so the Clean Water Bureau branch of the Stormwater Division, that's the office, posted a volunteer cleanup in District Five, and Sergeant Walata was there with the team, with the community policing team. So I met some of the fellow officers. And we didn't see the lawyer, the coordinator was also there. And it was really good to see the organization partnering and planting seeds of revitalization to combat the, right? The concept is a national concept. It started at the National Federal Prosecuting Attorney's Office, and then it became a local organization. Judge Steve Palm, who was previously the U.S. Prosecuting Attorney, now is at the city. And
Is there a valid question?
Yes, so the question is, because we've got a lot of complaints about homelessness, is there going to be more opportunities to collaborate with the community policing team and organizations like Leopoldama?
Yeah, sure, yeah. First sponsor is the head of the Kalihai Community Policing Team. But if you did touch bases with him, he'd probably be the best contact for future projects and HPD.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions from the community? Sergeant. Oh, go ahead. Please identify yourself. Yeah, please, come on.
Can you come up?
You have to come up.
Yes.
Yeah. Can I just say who you are?
Hello, April Batista. I just want to commend the Police Department for that district. I've had some, like, really scary encounters with a neighbor. But I really appreciate the way they spoke to me and handled the situation. So, yeah, good job to them. But the people that take the insight, the intake call, some of them are very sassy, and I do not appreciate that. That's all.
Hey, I'll pass on both, you know, commendation and maybe some correction as well to the communications. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Um, well, we, I, we have a comment. Um, just real quick here. In regards to, and I don't know if this was this district or this other districts, did you guys already have the new schedule in terms of, was it the four days on? Was it ten-hour days? Did you guys already have that? Or three hours?
Thirteen, yeah.
So you guys already had that? Were you one of the ones that already had that?
Yeah, Kalihai, we had a three-twelve, and then now the department-wide, all eight districts have what they call a three-thirteen schedule. Not a four-ten, but a three-thirteen.
Okay, I was just curious about that. Did you guys, were you already on that or not, or so, and how the officers were, you know?
Yeah, our officers were on it for over a year, so we kind of easily changed our, because District One started it, so I'm sure they're doing well as, as well.
Um, thank you for all the, thank you for all the help, thank you for helping support those in the community. And please have a nice night, and be safe.
Thank you.
Um, I'm gonna change it up a little. I want to go see Harry Cho's first, and I'll be at Board of Water Supply and get you guys the last part, okay? Harry, are you here?
Yes, I am. Good evening, everyone. Harry Cho with the Honolulu Authority for Rapid Transportation. My only update tonight is actually on the two questions from last month. First was regarding property acquisitions. There was a question about the process for the disposal of excess property. Earlier today, I actually emailed the board two documents. First is the FTA's Ward Management Requirements Circular five zero one zero dash one E, and the second is the Revised Ordinance, Chapter Thirty-seven, and that's on real property transaction. Both are publicly available documents, but all the information that you're looking for about property acquisitions and the disposal of excess property should be in those two documents. Also, if you're interested in this topic, I would recommend attending the Hart Board of Directors Meeting or the City Council Meeting where these property acquisitions are discussed. You'll get a lot more information from those meetings, and can even participate by providing testimony. And you can also hear from our Hart's Property Acquisitions Team directly, who are the subject matter experts in this field. The second question was regarding the process for relocating bus stops, and I spoke a little bit about this last month. But generally speaking, Hart, our contractor, and the bus meet regularly and determine which bus stops need to be closed or moved based on Hart's construction. And with the bus's approval, if a bus stop needs to be closed or moved, an alternative location is determined. And as for notifying the riders, the bus will typically install the signage and the directions at the affected bus stop, and that information gets posted on their website as well. So in a nutshell, that is kind of the process for how bus stops get moved temporarily. But other than those two questions, that's all I had to report on. But I can take any additional questions if there are any. Thank you.
Any questions from the board members? You have a question, Angela?
I'd like to ask about the TOD, the transient-oriented development that's going to be happening throughout the Hart life. And this is because of the enacting of the law Aloha Homes twenty eighteen, Senate Bill Eighty-six-five. So the state is going to be funding development in the TOD, in the TOD development zones, right? So the state is the largest land owner of, that, within the TOD zones. My question is, what is the work with the state on behalf of Hart? Because we haven't heard a lot about the state and Hart collaborations, but we hear a lot at the city about Hart. So I'm wondering if there's
Sorry, so, see, Hart, so Hart doesn't oversee any, Hart has nothing to do with TOD. We just fill the rails of the rail, the rail system, but TOD is overseen by the Department of Planning and Permitting. So if you, there's, you can actually go on DPP's TOD website. It's honolulu.gov/ TOD. And you can find pretty much all the information over there, but Hart doesn't have anything to do with TOD and doesn't oversee it either. That would be a morsel for DPP.
Okay, so Hart and City Council works on resolution for the property acquisition, but TOD is DPP? Got it.
Yeah, so Hart, so Hart is involved with property acquisitions for a construction of the rail system, but when it comes to development around rail stations, that is overseen by the Department of Planning and Permitting.
Okay, thanks.
Um, any other questions? Uh, okay, any questions from the community? Does anybody have a guess? Um, all right, Harry, I'll ask you questions offline. I just had a couple things here. I didn't want to take a lot of the time here, I want to give it to BWS. So I'll talk with you momentarily.
Okay, sure.
All right. Um, so on the agenda again, just my board of water supply, but also I'm going to just give the time, both time together.
Yeah, but you can have to, Iris, you have to report first.
I have to report first, Iris? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so I'll just do a quick report. There was two main breaks in August, on August, sorry, August. Sorry, I'm trying to read off my computer here. August first, twenty-third, sorry, August twenty-third, near eighteen twenty-four Kamamea Highway, and August eighth, near thirteen thirty-four Dillonham Boulevard. So those were the two breaks in August, main breaks. And we just have a general announcement. It's Source Board of Water Supply, we're observing the Source Protection Week from September twenty-fourth to September thirtieth. The goal is to bring awareness about the importance of protecting our precious drinking water sources. So while Oahu's water purely comes from groundwater resources, here are some basic ways you can hashtag protect the source. You can conserve and use water efficiently. Check and repair leaks regularly. Use only what you need and don't waste it. Properly dispose of household waste. Don't pour it down the drain, down the ground, down into the ground. And protect water sheds. Stay on designated trails and respect the wildlife. And join a community watershed partnership group. So with the closure of three water sources near Red Hill, we all need to be responsible stewards to ensure we'll have an adequate supply for safe drinking water today and for future generations. So if you do want more information, you can go to boardofwatersupply.com源formoreinformation. And that was my quick report. And if you want questions, or if you want to yield to them to their presentation.
Um, I just have one question, but I'll go ahead and ask the board members first. Any questions? Okay, community, company? Um, okay, the water breaks that were happening, are they because of just wear and tear, or is it because of construction and somebody hitting the pipe?
It's going to be for both, and you'll hear about it during their presentations of the different reasons we're going to be doing the water rate.
Okay, I appreciate that, Iris.
If that's okay with you, okay.
Oh, that's fine, that's fine, that's fine. Yeah. All right, thank you, Iris.
Thanks.
So again, I'm going to say that we are striking Agenda Item Four, Five, and we're moving on to presentations. So Board of Water Supply, do you have any comments? Do you have recess, or are you guys good?
No, we'll just be ready.
Okay? All right.
Mr. Chair, what do you want me to read?
Hi.
My name is Henderson Zuliva. I'm the Program Administrator for Information Technology at the Board of Water Supply. With me here tonight is Matthew Elliott Patnui, our Communications Officer, Erwin Wata, our Deputy Manager, and Stephen Rushman from the Puget's Office. I want, first off, want to thank you for allowing us to do the presentation. Being respectful of time, we're going to try and condense it so that we have more time for Q and A and discussions. But what we're doing right now is we're going out, community outreach. We've done actually four large venue outreaches to date, and we've done a number of neighborhood boards, I think almost half of them, if I remember correctly. And we have more that we're going to go to throughout October. And it's all to get feedback and comments with regards to the rates, schedule that we're proposing to work with. Next slide. So Board of Water Supply basically has to make, in a very large system, forty-eight and walk, will be served by a hundred and seventy thousand accounts, which represents about a billion people. And we've got a lot of facilities. Twenty-one hundred miles of pipe often comes up in a lot of the things that we discuss and replacement of pipes, as well as your question with regards to main breaks, because that's obviously visible to the public and impacting on the community when it happens. We have a thirty-year plan that was put in place back in twenty sixteen to address these aging infrastructures that need to be improved. And the twenty-one hundred miles of pipeline was part of that plan. Next slide. So the Board of Water Supply, just for everybody's clarity, is a semi-autonomous agency within the city, but not really a city agency in the sense of funding as well as oversight. So what that means is that we subsist on the rates that we already collect revenue off of. We don't get any tax money from the city. Also, which is important to remember, is that when we talk about rates tonight, it's just the water rates. Although you may see on water bills both sewer charges and water charges, sewer is part, or if you will, is a responsibility of Department of Fire and Mental Services within the city. They make the determination of what they're going to charge for the sewer services. We just unfortunately have to put them on our bill, to try to bill. The other thing to recognize is that our water rates is for, not the water, which is a misconception a lot of times, but it's for the delivery of the water. The water actually is not provided, is provided as far as a consumable free. You don't pay for the water, you pay for us to deliver it to your home to get it out of the house, out of the town. Next slide. So based on the current fiscal year twenty twenty-four, this is kind of a breakdown of where the money goes that we are collecting. A good portion, as you can see, goes about a third to the cost for employees and benefits, which is all determined primarily by collective bargaining agreement, right? There's a large amount that goes to the operations and maintenance, and you might see a big sliver there that is one that we are dealing with. And most, I think, of the residents on the island are, and that's the cost of electricity. It's actually gone up quite a bit from what we had anticipated, and we're dealing with adjusting how we operate the business to be able to accommodate these costs. Next slide. So the previous or the current, depending on how you want to look at it, rate structure was a five-year period from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-three. So the last change to rates was done in July first of twenty twenty-two. Revenue collected, as reflected in this slide, was spent on these areas when you look at capital projects. So a good amount of the dollars are going to facilities, updates, replacement of pipes, reservoir replacements, things along those nature in terms of the expenditure funds. Next slide. So one of the things that we're looking at is what happened since that last rate structure from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-two? And consequently, what do we need to look at going forward in terms of potential revenue requirements and consequently the rates that would support that? So some of the things that happened, obviously, everybody knows COVID nineteen, remembers COVID nineteen. It's still there, it's coming back. Next slide. Inflation, which, again, everybody is experiencing. One of the things that this slide shows is how inflation has outpaced our increase in revenues over that period of time. Next slide. Mentioned this earlier, the power costs. So the board had looked at and has implemented a lot of power saving capabilities. But even in reducing, as you can see in the purple line there, the trend line, reducing our usage of electricity, the cost continued to go up. But, you know, like I said, most everybody is familiar with that because it gets you into problems as well. Next slide. This was a big one, uh from the standpoint of the impact to our operations. And it also reflects, I think, going forward, what you'll see in terms of things that we're looking to do with regards to the upcoming proposed rates and the funding. Um but definitely Red Hill and the impact on our operations has shifted some things that we're looking at going going forward. Next slide. So what do we do in this period of time when we had a rate plan with a protective revenue that was developed back in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen? And we basically had to accommodate all of those changes that occurred in that period. Well, we obviously looked at where we could tighten our belt, uh what things we could defer from an expenditure perspective, reprioritize, now looking at things. The twenty twenty-four budget, our current budget year, is actually based upon the last year's budget with only a point two percent increase overall. So again, we're trying to hold our costs as tightly as possible. Um and it's all to make sure that we can spend wisely and invest in the areas that need to be invested in. Next slide. So this is the balance that we face in terms of revenue affordability and service delivery. One of the things that we are looking at is continue to reprioritize the capital project spend. Um one of the things, and you'll see it on a later slide, is how the shift has occurred with regards to our capital spend. I think it's eleven, excellent, one after. Um as well as looking at trying to maintain our operational expenses on an ongoing basis. Next slide. This is the slide I was speaking to. Um if you look at what the planning is, this is our capital projection and projects that we're looking to uh engage in over the next time period. The two colors that are of importance here to recognize is the yellow and the brown. Um we're shifting a lot of our focus, which prior to this period was on uh infrastructure improvement, pipeline replacement was a good chunk of that. Um but because of Red Hill, we've had to reprioritize, not necessarily away from infrastructure, because we know infrastructure is always gonna need to be uh maintained. But looking at how we can prioritize for source development. Because the um Red Hill impact has reduced, as is being publicized, by about twenty percent of our capability and capacity on the water side, the source side. So we need to develop new sources as well as continuing monitoring. So if you look at that yellow piece, that's why it's so large over the next few years. As we get hopefully a handle on that, and you'll see that we also have D-Sell as part of that equation, then we're looking at ramping back on the pipeline replacement side. So that's kind of the picture that we're looking uh in the future for the next rate structure of that five-year period, five and a half-year period. Next slide. So this slide really is to give you an idea of when we talk about rates, it's very complicated to some degree, but it covers different categories of customers' classes. And these are the classes that are identified here and how our rates are built. One of the things that we look at when we develop rates is to cover our cost per service, because we, we're not private, we're municipal, so we're not looking to make any profit, but we need to cover costs. And so the question comes down to how do you attribute the cost? Do you attribute everybody what cost to deliver the water to them? And this is where you have some flexibility in determining what your rate structure looks like. So if you look at it here, um single-family residential is looked at or built with the intent to cover ninety-five percent of the cost of the boarding curves to deliver water to them. Multi-family at a hundred percent. Agriculture is lower because we have a um desire to support sustainability on the island, especially many folks. So that is one of the key reasons why you look at the agriculture rate as being lower. The non-residential is actually helping to carry the cost for the heavy areas, and that's why they're over the hundred percent mark. Next slide. So with that in mind, this is what the overall average cost looks like given the rates that we're proposing. Um increases of ten percent, ten percent, nine percent, eight and a half, eight and eight, standing a five and a half year period. Next slide. So one of the things to also consider, and that's why I said it's a little complicated, is that those rates that I mentioned or that increases that I mentioned on the rates are basically the average, you wanna look at it that way. How each individual person gets impacted, especially when you look at the single-family side, is based upon what their consumption is. Because the cost for delivery of a thousand gallons increases the more water you use. So your actual increase may not be the ten percent. It probably is gonna be less if you're in the average consumer and not somebody that's using thirty thousand gallons a month. So um like I said, there's a lot more detail, and I think it's a lot of the handouts have that in there. Um also, the information you can find about all of this with the details on the individual um tiers and the cost per gallon for those tiers and each of those title category classes can be found on the boardofwatersupply.com website. If you go to the last slide, Stephen, that'll give you the um website. As well as contact information for the board, because like I said, what we're looking at is getting feedback from everybody, uh community especially. And we can take that information and look at having discussions with our board of directors, who is the ultimate decide on whether or not we are gonna move forward with the proposed rates. They make the decision on it. We just post it. So the feedback is definitely welcome. Now with that, have it open up for any questions.
Um I'm gonna start, Evelyn.
Hi, Evelyn, Ellen, that that's a lot to kind of swallow and and digest and kind of make sense of what we're gonna be looking at in total five and a half years from now. Is it like fifty percent increase in five and a half years? If it's ten, ten, eight, eight, what was the last one? I I missed that. And is that in this?
Yeah, yeah, it's in all the handouts and it's actually um more like sixty-six percent.
Sixty-six percent. Wow, that's nuts. So I would want you guys to propose to the sewer, uh part of the environmental branch that they um take back some of that, what they're collecting now, and then allow you guys to pick up the slack so it evens it out, because that's like, I'm gonna be working to pay you guys. I won't have any money to go home with me. And and that's like, that's nuts. As a, I fall into two categories, as a residential as well as a multi-unit. Now, I'm gonna be hit big time. There's no way I can try and create generational wealth for myself and my my uh grandchildren when I keep getting hit like this crazily from the city, so take that back, talk to the sewer, tell them to give back some of that crazy increase that I see every month in my bill. And and maybe you guys can have that conversation. You share the same bill, same envelope, share the burden. That's all. Thank you.
Evelyn, just so that you're aware in the handouts, um you can look at some of the uh examples for the single-family, multi-family, and it'll give you an idea of what the power impact will be.
Still, that's less money for mine.
Yeah, understood.
Thank you, I'll give you a question. Uh you have a question?
Yeah, so in one of the first slides, it said that this particular Board of Water Supply from the city of Kauai, Honolulu does not get subsidy. Meaning it does not get taxpayers' money to use it as utility, right? So um this is research, uh in the United States, water prices vary on where we're at and the provider. On a national average, it's about fifty dollars per month for water and sewer. Um and higher charges are due to infrastructure maintenance and improvement. And the availability of clean water is essential for public health. Yet, um we see data from twenty nineteen showing eight percent of households in the US struggle to get basic household needs such as water. The National Association of Water Companies reported since twenty eleven, rates have increased national, uh which is higher than any other utility. So this is my question. In order to help families with water bills, many local governments have introduced assistance programs, right, that provide subsidies with discounts based on income levels or if someone qualifies for SNAP, the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program. So is there a way that the city of Honolulu's Board of Water, you know, to address the concern of increased rates, create subsidy programs?
Yeah, thank you for asking that.
Thank you for addressing that. Thank you very much. So actually, we do, we have a whole suite of uh conservation. One of the things we do is we keep our customer service, our monthly charge low, which is based on the meter size. Most of the meters in our system are single-family, five-eighths or three-quarter. So the bigger your meter, the more you're going to pay. That that's what the sewer does. They have a larger fixed rate and a smaller adjustable rate. We do it the opposite. We keep a smaller fixed rate and a larger adjustable. So the actually, the savings falls within each person's hands. So we do have a number of programs. We have waivers for affordable and homeless housing that we've given a two-point-five million in waivers over the last five years. We do the ag. It's a a social policy for us to support agriculture. We have two new programs that are coming up, one for what we're calling a Capuna, direct install. We've been working with a consultant to do a direct installations to help lower water usage in affordable and senior housing. But now we wanna do seniors that live on their own, that may still be independent, but may not be aware they have leaks in their house or running toilet. So Saint Francis actually reached uh at one of the mayor's town halls, the one over in Pearl Harbor. And we met with Melissa, and we're gonna be meeting with her again. We've also met with the city's elderly services, Marcia Tamora and Derek. Uh and uh we're gonna be working with them to reach out to Capuna on their own. And actually, this community is one of the communities we're looking at. Because we believe there are a lot of single uh families, seniors living by themselves that could benefit from this program, where we would come in, do a water audit, and help them to find out if they have any problems on their property to reduce their water usage. So ten percent of the people in our system only use two thousand gallons a month. So we do wanna encourage the water conservation, because it's also good for the environment, and it's good for any drought, you know, with that uh piece as well. But we're not doing direct subsidies. We do it through the conservation.
Can that be done with resolution from the City Council?
City Council head is not a work semi-autonomous, so the City Council could certainly do a resolution and ask us to look into it. And that's something we can definitely take back to the board. But that would have to be on income-based, and you have to figure out how are you gonna reach those people? How are you gonna get that data? Thank you.
Again, I I echo, uh thank you for being here. Communication is key. But I do echo Evelyn's concern for the rising cost of everything. This could be taken into account, not just water, sewer, electricity, rent, having a job that pays a level of wage, groceries, medical bills, and everything that we call life in general. We all in this room have to deal with how much do we have to pay for the roof over our head and the life that we live? And for the families and the ohandas that we have on the dark side, and can we afford to even have it now? That's the question that we are all facing a crisis at the moment. So unfortunately, we're in a hot hot seat with water. With the Red Hill situation, I don't wanna feel that to be to be glazed over or forgotten at all, because that is a crisis not only here for Red Hill and those occupants in the military, but those in the surrounding communities are also affected in the public. Corrosive water, people have drank and bathed in it and cooked it and washed, brushed their teeth, washed their clothes, cleaned the dishes, all of which can cause cancer. My concern here with that being said, and this on public record, what is the Board of Water Supply benefiting to help in the system? Many thousands of people that later on, ill, the word is ill, italic bold letters, have cancer. What is the contribution of Board of Water Supply will be helping for many families, children, and those in generations to come that will be suffering from the fallout of that?
Well, we do know there are a number of lawsuits. You probably saw the news last night, and then Erwin, please jump in. Uh as you know, Erwin Guad is been leading the charge on Red Hill for many years. Uh there is no evidence of anything getting into our system. Uh Erwings, we just posted a whole slew of new tests. There's no protection of any petroleum in the Board of Water Supply system. Navy is completely separate water system from ours, and as you know, a number of the families are already with their lawsuits. Uh we have um providing information to their lawyers if they have asked. So if they need anything, we're there to provide information for them. Uh so we are watching all of that very closely. Uh we have, we'll also pursue all means to make ourselves whole because we also know that Red Hill is affecting all of you. And like you pointed out, Vice Chair, your pocketbook. And we we acknowledge that, and we're going to take every uh option available to us to get our recovery. In the meantime, we have been working with our federal delegation, our state and city delegation. They have all been very great about helping us find grants and funding. Uh we did receive money from the CARES Act, the Build Better Act. Uh and again, we are working with the state. Uh they have uh the last legislature gave us some money. We're working through to get that now. And again, we've worked very closely with the federal delegation, and we've been talking with uh people there about funding and things like that as well. We will not give this up.
This is the, I don't mean to punch you off, but this is crucially important. Medical costs and medical bills later on, on the low for many that have been affected will be astronomical. And they also home, may be homeless because of the medical costs, which they will have. It will, that will just will. It will happen. They will die with cancer in many different aggressive forms. So with that being said, what are, what is Board of Water Supply, what is the taxpayer's responsibility to make sure that this tragedy that has not only happened here in Red Hill, but also Lahaina does not happen again?
Well, I can't speak to Lahaina. That's a different island. We do not control the water. Yeah, but uh we're just saying, keep talking to your elected officials and tell them how you feel. Again, support the families, the Navy families that were affected. Any way you can, it'll be there for them, support them. If you have information that you could provide, provide that information.
So maybe pass legislation and bills that some chunk of our taxpayers' money can be done to do some life testing or active testing to make sure
Yeah, you're not, that would come with DOH, yeah.
what your assumptions are, what your legal assumptions are, that there has been allegedly, the word is allegedly, everybody in the room and on TV, and this is recorded, allegedly, there has been a cost contamination, because God forbid if there is. And later.
But we're not, we're not a, we're not a scientific DOH, so we do recommend people talk to DOH as well. You're absolutely correct. Talk to DOH.
Okay, thank you.
And again, we're not taxpayers, rate payers. We don't get taxpayer dollars. We just wanna make that clear. We're completely self-sufficient.
Low subsidy yet. So that's something, again, like you circle back.
Big baby, maybe down the road.
But it's like, we're not trying to put you on the hot seat. We're trying to get information out. So those that are watching at home, those that are here in the audience
Yes, ma'am.
can see where the conversation needs to be had, and efforts need to be had.
Yeah, yeah. And they need to really talk to your elected officials. Those are important conversations. You're absolutely correct. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Uh okay.
Definitely.
So thank you for your transparency here today. Um I am very worried about the rates, and I can understand that, you know, it has to keep up with the cost. I just wish that it was a bit more, you know, cost-effective, and I wish inflation was lower. But that's beyond our power. That's beyond our adversity. Um my question is regarding Red Hill. Since they're planning to defuel it uh soon, I forgot what was the timeline. Uh I could be wrong, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-three, second one?
I'm gonna turn that over to Erwin Collin.
Yeah, so my question is about regarding the costs within the next five years of if this situation of defueling will affect our, you know, B S W, B?
BWS.
BWS, sorry. BWS uh like cost in operations in the next five years, if it like will increase it or decrease it, I wanna know like that time period.
Okay, number one, the defueling that the Navy is supposed to do is to take all the fuel out of those tanks, right?
Right.
Now, it start, it's scheduled to start October sixteen. It's gonna continue through around the middle of early, mid to early February next year. So what the defueling does, it takes the risk of all of this fuel sitting over the drinking water. So it it takes that away, number one. But as far as for us is concerned, we still gonna have to, we're gonna continue to monitor our wells, because there's still contamination in the in the rocks underneath the underneath the tanks. And how that contamination is affected or influenced in the environment is something that continues to need to be studied. So we're gonna continue. So we're gonna continue to do testing on our wells, we have a number of wells that have been shut down. Because we don't really know right now how our wells are gonna be affected, so we certainly don't want to pump contaminated water into our water system. And that's the reason why we shut down our wells.
Right.
And and that's gonna continue into the future.
Yeah, so will this affect like BWS's cost, you know, in terms of like maintenance and operations or testing? Will this affect it in the next five years in terms of like increasing of uh decreasing of, you know, cost operations or will it decrease, if you're aware?
Well, as far as right now, um because we have a number of wells that are shut down, we better find new water supplies, so that's an effect on our operation already.
Okay.
Okay, so that's already happening. Because we had to shut down, but that process takes time, putting a new well, it takes five to seven years to do that.
Hmm.
So that's why, like Kathy mentioned, we're going to go out to try to get like federal monies or grant monies to try to pay for all of that, rather than try to put it on the rate pair. At the same time, we have to adjust our operations, we have a certain number of wells that we have to work with right now. And the problem there is that if we over pump these wells, we can also damage the wells and make them salty. So we're trying to, through conservation, through moving water from other parts of our system, to try to make up our uh our water supply in this metropolitan Honolulu area. All of these things are affecting our operations, and in many cases, it's wrecking, increasing our costs, yes. Yeah, so the idea is to try to get these new water supplies into production as soon as possible, alright? So it is a effort that we, our staff is trying to shorten that process, be on it all the time, put in our permits, get our requests in there. So that we can, you know, do the work, we find a new water supplies and put in a new construction, a new company to get that water into our system.
We all talk the same language, you're thinking.
Yeah.
Another question, uh going back to, I like linear equations, of which include labor, time, cost, supplies, equipment. So in all of that chunk of conversation, which is thankfully, thank you so much for the explanation, federal and the, again, linear equation, cost, money. And subsidies, speaking to our legislators, finding different ways to keep the cost reasonable? Because it seems like everything's out of control, the cost of everything is out of control. I'll I'll say that as as the sum comes up every day, because it is true. Which will homeless whenever and people are getting pushed out of their homes and things are just getting out of control and not more initiative and homelessness like more for generations.
Yeah.
Right, we gotta do what we gotta do to survive, but there's only so much dollar and penny that you can stretch for it to be reasonable. Um further echoing for Evelyn, Department of Environmental, if some way somehow we can get them in here to that degree, because they are part of the equation. But like half of the equation is missing in the room, and you gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, it's so gracious, we find your time to be here today because you guys are all based.
Yeah, that's a good point that was raised, and that's something that we can go and take a, talk to them about, certainly. Uh this process is all about getting feedback, and your feedback's important, because it is it is part of the total process, right? And so, uh yes, we will take it back, have a talk with Environmental Service. I don't guarantee the outcome, but we can certainly talk to Environmental Service.
Just one thing that everyone should know, all of your questions tonight are being recorded and will be on our website. So we won't attach names to it unless you want us to, but everyone's comments and questions will be up on our website, so complete transparency, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I just had a question, a couple of questions, you're talking about, you know, finding those federal pots of money, right? So that's the federal delegation, whatever that comes in from law, that's coming on a federal register, and you guys are just basically trying to go after those grants as much as you guys are?
Right, right. There is a list of different kinds of federal grants or funding opportunities, right? And some of them will apply to our operations, some of them obviously won't, so we keep track of that. We're taking a look at, and those that really make sense, uh that we think we have a good opportunity to get some funding for, we're gonna apply to. This this past legislature actually gave us um ten million dollars for exploratory wells for finding new water supplies. That money was released by the governor, and we're actually gonna be using it to drill a well and also drill some what is called monitoring wells. These are kinda like test wells, used to understudy the subsurface geology and study where this contamination could be going and what could be happening with it. And that's one of the problems, there's not enough of these things, and it's and it's not, there are some, but they're not in the right places. And so remember, we're dealing with something underground, we can't see underground, so we need to collect information. And it takes time and effort to get that information, to understand what is happening with that contamination.
So is that more, sorry to ask on the policy side, but I guess biological survey?
US Geological Survey is involved, Department of Health is involved. Uh every year, the legislature puts out bills to try to help the people who have been exposed and impacted, to help. We provide testimonies and support a lot of that. Uh we actually did talk to Department of Health and say, hey, you know, there are people who are, you know, many have been affected by that contamination and they need that kinda like that medical support, right, long term, not just short term, they need long term medical support, like forever kindness, right?
Right.
So but that's something that, you know, we're not a health agency, we can only recommend and only provide testimony, that really, the the outcome is in the hands of others, our lawmakers.
Right. As I I'm I'm trying to get back on, is there there's a CIP portion of that, I mean, that's where a lot of the cost is. Um so whatever agencies that are coming down with the pipeline that, you know, I don't know if E N B has more uh departments, you know, in terms of what they could qualify for from a federal register standpoint, but is that something you guys can work on together, or you guys are in terms of whatever grants, you know, and you'd have the grant right in capacity right now, or, you know, which is more important?
Yeah, we're gonna go for the the water ones, E N B can go for the wastewater ones, right? Some some of these apply, some of the grant opportunities are for drinking water source um infrastructure. Others are for wastewater, so there's a difference between the two. So um E N B will handle the the wastewater ones and we will handle the drinking water ones.
Um I saw on there that you had D cell on there, uh normally D cell is really really expensive in terms of power.
It is, it is.
And and it's about a one to five ratio, and it's like for every uh gallon of water, about five gallons of cell, and you're gonna have to sell. Um is that, I mean?
We have, we have a project at the Kauai Lo, uh desalination project, it's our first, we're taking small steps to learn about, again, gain experience with desalination. So we have this first one that's gonna generate uh one point seven million gallons per day, expandable up to five. Uh we just are in the process, just starting it right now, working with our uh contractor to begin the 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 uh the studies and design and construction of the cell.
Actually, our very first meeting with our potential customers, it's the water is gonna pipe to Campbell Industries, we wanna get them off of potable water. And using this D cell water, which is basically what we do at our recycling plant, once a week. So we're actually gonna be meeting, we sent out letters to all the folks at Campbell, so we're gonna be meeting with them tomorrow at couple like hours, that's our first outreach meeting to them.
I I can ask other more like offset cost type questions, but I saw that D cells, it's mean how much power that's gonna save just on its own, just because, I mean, the two examples, I'll use one example, Saudi Arabia, there's a park that devoted only toward that desalination, that's on the coast, and you have the one that's in Israel.
We're gonna do solar with the D cells, so you're ready?
Yeah, we need to be.
Okay.
And.
Don, she wanna say something?
Yeah, she has her answer.
Okay, you know what, um I I can ask you guys, but I'll go ahead and uh let them ask their question, go ahead. Does she wanna say something? Senator, do you wanna say something?
Oh, I didn't hear you, sorry, I'm having a hard time here. Yes, I do have uh two questions uh for border water supply. The first is, we've, you know, heard about all the cost from Red Hill and that you said you're going to get as much um from, I guess, the military? Or the federal government to make us whole, is that correct?
Uh number one, Senator, hi Senator, this is Erwin Kawata, number one, uh yes, we are uh we are going to be exploring or maintaining every option to recover the cost uh because of the impact on Red Hill from the Department of Defense, yes.
Okay, so if and when you get that, then will you be giving the ratepayers some um rollbacks or refunds? Uh you know, the government's giving you money, you're asking for all of these monies, these grants and so forth, but you're collecting these increases uh from the ratepayers? So if you do get made whole, then are you going to roll back some of that back to the ratepayers? Or you're just gonna hang on for a little bit?
No, that's something we're gonna need to take a look at, because we're also gonna need to look at what is the cost of us doing, operating our water system, right? If the cost of the wa- operating the water system also goes down, then that's something that we're gonna take to the board to consider.
Yeah, because I know, you know, I know that when taxes go up or anything goes up, it never goes back down. And a lot of this cost is because of the the military and the Navy and what they did, and so definitely need to make the ratepayers whole. The second question is on the increases, is it a compounding? So if this year it goes up ten percent and my bill is a hundred dollars, so it goes up ten dollars, then the next increase is gonna be on the hundred and ten dollars?
Yes, yes, that's correct.
So it's gonna continue compound, so the overall compound, is that sixty six percent or is that more than that?
It's about sixty six point six percent, that's correct.
With the compounding, now is it based on your current bill at the first time with the rate, or is it gonna be a bill each year that the increase is is on? So if you're, if you use less water and your bill goes down, is that the percentage is gonna be on that amount?
Uh yes, it's based on the amount you use, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. Uh and finally, I just wanna say, you know, I know you talked about um asking the legislature and so forth, but you folks that have to understand with what's happening in on Lahaina. The funding and the surpluses are all gone, it's gonna be very difficult uh to be able to find any extra funds. And there's no such thing as free money, because the pie and the tax collection is only so large. And so somewhere along the line, you know, the taxpayers are gonna pay for all of this, right? So we're gonna either have to collect more taxes, the city's gonna have to raise your property taxes, if they're gonna give any kind of of subsidies along the way. So uh and then with Hawaiian Electric and all of the lawsuits going on, definitely our electric bills are all gonna go up as well. So it is very daunting for all of the people out there in the state.
Yes. Yes, we agree, we agree with you, yes, Senator, we agree with you.
So I just hope you folks look at all the efficiencies that you can to cut rates, because the the ratepayers just cannot afford all of these increases, thank you.
Yeah, we we're gonna have to continue to be truthful with what we have and save, and then for those things that we can defer and, you know, not not spend, we're gonna continue to do that. But yes, you're absolutely correct, this is a very daunting and challenging time, yes.
Um, thank you, Senator, uh anybody else?
Oh, I I just wanted to make a quick comment, as a native Hawaiian, the re- reality of me having to move is like really real at this moment for me. And and that's really sad, because, you know, this is where I'm from, born and raised, and it's it's looking like I can't even afford to stay where I'm at. Even with what I have in terms of real estate that I have, it's gonna be eaten up by all the taxes. Say goodbye to my grandchildren's college fund that I started for them, you know, thinking I'd get ahead, but I'm really not. The state is too much, I'm telling you, just have to put it out there.
You have, you have a question, good question.
So um so the finances, right, the flex, that's where we're at, addressing this concern. Resolution twenty three dash one nine seven heard in public infrastructure and technology, in the last city council hearing, talked about creating a commercial um property assessed financial program, assessment program to support green infrastructure. So if houses are required to retrofit and to get sun, solar panels, um then the burden to the people is gonna be, they're gonna help it out by creating this resolution to try to start negotiations with H G I A, Hawaii Green Infrastructure Authority, and the city and the city's Department of Budget and Physical Services, um to let me collect any commercial property assessed financial assessment.
Sandra, what is your question?
Approved by the authority, so um this is a parallel example, right? That in this sort of situation, there can be financial programs and other um solutions, and.
So Angela, what is your question?
Yeah, so it's it's just something that we consider, um because water is important, green infrastructure is important, yeah. And the EPA uh, you know, talks about.
And Angela, what is your question?
That that's our question, if you consider.
Thank you for, yeah, Angela's suggestion, yeah, move look at.
Alright. Um, I'll be at eight months here, you know? Okay, um, thank you guys very much, I know this is.
Oh, 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 oh.
Hey, Lydia.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, come up here.
Okay, okay, can I stay here?
Come over here, hold it up, closer, a little closer to the mic.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, hi, thank you for being here, so I was looking at this little handout, and at the back, it says non-residential rates. Why are non-residential customers pay a flat rate regardless of their business type and water usage? I'd like to know the justification for that. And who counts as non-residential rates, again, you don't have to answer this today, like next time is fine, thank you. And agricultural rates, like it says here that customers are supporting the lower rates spread across all other, yeah, that part, um. I don't know, I I just have some issues for that as far as agricultural rates, like are we talking about these like ag lands that are owned by these like mainland companies, you know? Um yeah, just like what people have been brought up, like these rates are ridiculous, although I'm a renter, um how is that gonna affect my rent in the future? So yeah, something to think about, and I'll follow along for those answers at the next one, thank you.
Actually, I can answer you now.
Okay, oh, good, oh, I like you.
Sorry.
Ah, you can answer, go for it.
Non-residential is everybody that's not single-family, multifamily, ag. Uh that's everybody that's government, hotels, businesses, restaurants, everybody else pays what we. And they actually pay the highest, they actually pay a hundred and seventeen percent of their cost of service, as Henderson pointed out, which means.
As they should.
Yeah, and we're not arguing that, we we agree with you, and and single family pays ninety five percent, and we deliberately didn't raise single family to a hundred percent, because you're right, it would be way too expensive, we agree with you. Uh so that's why we leave up non-residential, because they are subsidizing everybody else. When it comes to agriculture, anybody who's commercial that uh has a G T license uh can get the ag rate, and that's at every level. Small apartments, I'm from the North Shore, I have a lot of friends who get the ag rate, and they get it, but they they show that they are in commercial business and things like that. So that is out to anybody who actually does farming formally.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
So can I have this a follow, I didn't get, it doesn't have to be answered today.
Okay.
But like as far as ag land and the farmers, is there a differential bes- besides, between smaller farms, which I, you know, I don't think like I totally support them, but I'm talking about these bigger ones out in Kuna and stuff. Like are they paying the same as same ones from like Waiholi or, you know, small farms?
Actually, most of the bigger farms actually have their own wells.
Oh.
They don't, they don't, because it's cheaper for them to dig their own wells, uh to go to the, but they have, they are governed by the Commission on Water Resource Management.
Yeah.
They have to get permits, they have to dig the wells, everything. A lot of the smaller farmers, also some of them have their own wells, or they're on the old irrigation systems from the sugar companies.
Yeah.
It just depends, for example, Tyger, Wahea just transferred, Dole just transferred their Wahea ditch system to the state of Hawaii. And so there are a lot of farmers on that water, and they get their water, now they would get their water from the state.
That's fair, sorry.
Yeah.
Um as a follow to the non-residential rates, like who sets these things, like why are, why, like why? Like is it our elected officials, is that something that we would ask them?
No, no. No, actually, we do what we call a cost of service study. We started several years in advance and we literally sit down and we go through everything, what it costs to serve, what it costs our system, we, our financial team does this. And we have a company that CDM's with, this company that did our financial rate study this year. And then they sit down and we, there's a group of us that, that sit down, Irwin was part of it, Henderson. We all sit down and we have literally run these scenarios on what it's going to cost. And we must have run between 20 and 30 various scenarios this last time, looking at what the rates, what the, what it would affect, how it would affect people. It's incredibly complicated process, it's not easy. And trust me, we really do seriously take this, you know, we really are grateful for everyone's comments tonight. And we understand that, trust me, I'm in the same boat, we're all in this together. And we do really look very closely at this and what it's going to cost. Now, just so you know, when we did our last five-year rate schedule, this goes to, uh, the comment about, Senator's comment about getting a rollback. When we did our rate study for 2018 to 2023, we actually did not implement it until 2019. So we held the old rates. So that, our, our board has the ability to do that. We can't, all we can do is take the information to our board of directors and say, this is, this is what we're hearing, this is what we, we're, we have some recommendations. But at the end of the day, they're the ones that are gonna make that final decision. So when they're looking at the next rate study, they may very well, like you said, if costs come down, we get whole, things change. There are, it may be, we've held rates in the past where we had 11, 12 years where we didn't raise the rates at all. And unfortunately, the problem with that is that the infrastructure, so so it's, again, it's that balancing act between how much is too much and what can we get by. And, and I have to say, our boss, Ernie Lau, when COVID hit, he sent us all back and he had to cut our budgets by 15%. Then he sent us back again and cut our budgets by another 10%. So we've been cutting our budgets very, and he really, really watches the bottom line because he feels the same thing that everyone else here and he doesn't wanna be any more of a burden than we already are.
Thank you, thank you guys. We got, we have one more other presentation.
Yeah, we've got one.
So I know this is gonna be a, a, a big topic, so you guys have the contact info for those people, Ken, right? And it's up there, is that where it's at?
Yeah, and it's in the handout.
So we really, like, we really streamlined this so we can have this conversation, but we have one other presentation.
Yeah, I understand, we just, we really appreciate you guys being here, thank you so much.
Thank you.
You. Um, moving on to the next presentation, uh, we have, uh, Fujiara, Living Treasure? Thanks. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Thank you, thank you very much.
So we can keep this one to the, um, total 15 minutes, if that makes sense? So that includes a question as well?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm gonna start a timer just so I can kind of keep track.
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone, board members, uh, everyone in attendance. My name's Ethan McCown, I'm with, uh, G70, I'm joined by my colleague Tracy Camuso, who's gonna be moving the slides, uh, for me this evening. And then obviously, I'm joined by Allison Furukawa, who were helping out with her project this evening. So we're here to tell you a little bit about Furukawa Living Treasure and, uh, the permit application that we'll be submitting. Uh, go ahead, Tracy, next slide. So I just wanna provide some background information. So Furukawa Living Treasure, um, is a senior daycare center. Um, it has been in operation for the last 23 years and it's in the same location it is today. It's owned and operated by Allison Furukawa. Um, the center provides services to seniors who just need a little bit of extra help during the day. Um, they provide nutritious meals, physical activities. I was just there yesterday, it was so awesome to see all these seniors moving their bodies and listening to music and eating snacks and having a good time. So, um, we are applying for a conditional use permit, uh, minor with the city and county department of planning and permitting. So that's why we're presenting tonight, a little bit more on that in a couple of slides. Um, but go ahead, Tracy, next slide. Um, this is where, uh, Furukawa Living Treasure is at. Um, it's just right across, uh, kind of the street, Kapalama Avenue from Bishop Museum. So, um, there's the tax map key. Um, the state land use district is zoned as urban, uh, and the city and county zoning is R5 residential. And that becomes kind of important for kind of the application we're submitting to DPP. Uh, go ahead, next slide. So we are applying for a conditional use permit from the Department of Planning and Permitting, conditional use permit minor. So the center has already been approved conditional use permit minor from 2000. So the application that we're submitting is just to show DPP that the center's current use as a senior daycare center is still in compliance with the land use zoning designations that we showed on the previous slide. I think it's important for everyone in attendance, the board members, folks watching, that, you know, this isn't a permit and app- this is not a permit application for any changes to the premises, you know, physical expansions, um, no service changes. This is just to kind of like paper up and show DPP that the uses are remaining consistent with what the zoning allows. Um, the center also holds relevant permits from the Hawaii Department of Health. Now, that's not what this presentation is about. DOH permits are primarily for like, is the center safe? Um, they have a food services permit, so they're all, um, completely clear with that. They hold those permits from DOH, um, but I just wanted to share that as well in case it was a question. Um, you can do next slide, Tracy. So I just wanted to share that, you know, this center is so well-known in our community. Um, they've received an assortment of awards, this is a reckon- recognition from the Hawaii House of Representatives. They've received similar, um, awards from the city and county, um, all sorts of recognitions. But I just wanted to, um, include that here, um, next slide. Um, I also wanted to include just some testimonials, so these were testimonials that people submitted to us from Ohana who have family members that use this daycare center as services. So I'm not gonna read all of them, I'll just kind of like write, um, some excerpts. Overnight, my mom went from a self-sufficient, healthy senior citizen living independently to someone who needed 24/7 care. Um, she's with a lively group of senior citizens and it's given her a renewed sense of purpose. Um, next one says, being active has helped him a lot. Allison communicates with us on how he's doing and has sent us snapshots and videos of him participating in activities. He looks happy and having fun, go ahead, next slide. Um, a few more, um, we feel it's a good resource for the community. Um, we believe that singing is stimulating her vocal cords, enhancing her breathing, challenging her mind and most of all, is a lot of fun for her. Um, next one says, his words are, they take good care of me. The activities he enjoys the most is word search, which he does every day, but he is there. Really engaging services that, um, Allison and her team provide to these, these seniors. Go ahead, next slide. Um, I wanted to include some pictures just 'cause they're so cute. Um, they throw birthday parties, they have holiday events, they do arts and crafts. Um, they're open Monday through Fri- or sorry, Monday through Saturday, they're closed Sundays and all the major holidays. Typically on the weekend, you know, he's Kupuna, our home with their Ohana. Um, so, um, yeah, uh, I think there might be one more slide. Oh, and then I wanted, um, before we really get into it, I wanted to turn it over to Allison since she's the owner and operator. Um, if there's anything you wanted to share, Allison?
We just really appreciate the opportunity to serve, um, the seniors. They have dementia or Alzheimer's, so that their families can go to work and have a balanced life. It's been a privilege, uh, a true honor to be able to do.
Thanks, Allison, yeah. So a little bit about just like next steps, right? So we're here at the Kaliki Palama Neighborhood Board giving this presentation. You know, we're here as part of the process to make sure that we're engaged with the community and so folks know kind of what's happening. So we're not here for like a vote, this is just purely informational sharing. We'll submit the permit probably in October and then after that, DPP will usually go through a review process in about 90 days. Um, so that's kind of the process. So from there, I think short and sweet, um, if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Allison, I'm sure can jump in, go ahead, Evelyn.
Hi, Evelyn here, um, did you guys do any outreach with the neighbors?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, so that's a part of the process, so they were invited to tonight's neighborhood.
Okay, as long, as long as they know and is parking a problem? Because parking is a problem period in Kalihii though, is it there?
Great question. Yeah, so actually, you know, they, there's plenty of street parking along Kapalama Avenue. And then the other thing, Allison has this thing down to a science. Like the seniors come in staggered amounts throughout the, um, day for drop-off and for pickup. Um, it's like a really, it's a well-oiled machine. I was there when some of that was happening and it was just kind of seamless.
And then lastly, it's interesting that G70 is, uh, presenting for her. So how did you guys get involved with something like this?
Yeah, so, I mean, these permits can get kind of involved, right? It's a pretty kind of onerous application, I don't wanna say onerous, but you wanna make sure you're getting all of your details right, right? So we as a firm specialize in just kind of like helping folks kind of navigate that process, understand what needs to go in that application for it to be successful.
So how did you know to call them?
Uh, well, I focus on care for the seniors, so I mean, I don't have a whole lot of time to prepare, you know, uh, the conditional use permit and everything. So, um, they would have recommended, uh, so by many other professionals.
Interesting, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? If there's any, no, you have a question.
Thanks, I'm for reading shit.
Oh, yeah.
You have a real question, because we were, I'm really sure for that.
Can I show my support? Because I'm one of the people.
You can say that, I'm supportive.
Okay. Um, so I am one of the neighbors who lives, um, next to Furukawa, Living Treasure Daycare, the senior daycare facility. And, um, he's been serving the community with healthy activities for 20 years. Um, and they play bingo, play music, play some songs.
So you support?
I support.
Okay, sorry, we, we have, oh, this part, sorry, sorry, I have it, I'm really, yeah. Karz, do you have a question?
No, not this, uh.
Okay, um, ready to get to, um, there's a person that's out here, back here, and then I'll get to her. So, I'm sorry, do you wanna see anything?
Yes, all I wanted to say is, my mother's 102 years old and still doing fine. Of course, her walking is glorious and everything, but one thing she does enjoy, she enjoys going to Living Treasures. And I just wanted to share that because, uh, whatever needs to occur for this to continue and be supported, I really had that to be considered. As a recipient of her care, uh, I'm just delighted that at her age, she's seemingly happy and, uh, you know, just enjoying herself very much, so.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, 102.
Thank you.
Looks like question, thank you, thank you first of all for the good work that you're doing taking care of seniors. But as far as the traffic is concerned, are you trying to not, um, add to the traffic with the school? Cause I know that the school have had issues on Kapalama Avenue, um, during the drop-off time with the kids and the families and so forth, and we've had to have the police come in and monitor. So I just hope that, you know, you folks are timing it so you're not with that school rush.
Yeah, thanks, Senator. I had Tracy show the map there where it's at. From what I can tell, there is no impact there. And again, you know, Allison has shared that there's never been an impact issue with traffic and we're not changing, there's not an expansion of service or anything like that. So there hasn't been a problem, I don't think there will be a problem.
Okay, just wanna make sure, yeah, thank you so much.
Any other questions? Okay, go ahead, Laura. Glenn? Glenn, there? Glenn, you're muted.
Excuse me, sorry about that. I, good evening, my name is Glenn Higa. I am the, uh, closest neighbor to Allison, um, I'm, I live right next door, uh, right next door to her. And I'm, I'm, full disclosure, I'm also the president of the Hawaii Parking Association. I just wanna say that we appreciate everything that Allison has done for the senior community and that, and so forth. Um, however, um, there, there is, there is one thing that, that we as neighbors, uh, struggle with and that is the, the noise throughout the day that, that comes from, from her facility. While we don't, um, we, we appreciate the fact she does sing and exercise with her, with their clients and everything. Um, and I've addressed this with several times, um, the, the singing is loud, the, the, the workers that she has are, were shouted or seem, seem like they, they speak at a very high volume. I don't know if that's because their, their client are hard of hearing or if they feel they need to, to project their voices, but this, it's very early in the morning, 7 o'clock in the morning, goes to 5:00 P.A. or even there sometimes. And we just want to be considerate of, of what we have to go through as neighbors. We, we appreciate everything she does for the senior community. We just want, we just wanna make sure that, that our needs are, as neighbors are addressed as well.
Right, thank you. Is there anybody else? Yeah? Thank you, Glenn. Um, okay, I think we have Rayan. Do you have Rayan? Rayan, you wanna say something?
Yeah, Rayan.
Okay, um, is the process for this U.P. minor also to go through a DPP public hearing?
Uh, I'm gonna let Tracy actually answer that question for you, my colleague. Yeah.
Good evening, everyone, Tracy Camuso, I'm at G70. Um, the conditional use permit could potentially have a public hearing, um, if one is requested. And it's usually when there is something of concern to go about to DPP's, uh, attention. For the most part, I mean, this is an existing use, it's been going on for many, many years. Allison talks to her neighbors, we've notified everyone of this meeting, um, there's a lot of outreach. So I think, um, DPP is aware of the project because it's an existing use, it's a little different than if it's a new project. If it's a vacant piece of land, you know, then it becomes, hey, what's gonna happen? This is something that's been operating, it's really like even since we bring it up and getting us to match Department of Health, um, licensing. So relating to traffic and, you know, all that stuff, we, we just went there yesterday and it was really nice. The parking was, shit, six stalls available and no one was in it. You know, there was no traffic, we actually went around school time, when school was coming out. There was no backup or issue, we saw a senior coming in and out, drop-off was good. I mean, I, I feel like, you know, we've been doing this for a long time and this is, this is a good one. So we have a hard time with some of it, but this is a good project. And so it's, it's really just aligning, um, the process. And to answer your question, once we turn it in, there's about a 60-day review period. And then from that point, you know, DPP will ask anybody if they have concerns and then from there we'll, we'll pull.
I believe the usual determination is health, safety, and welfare, I think are the things that we use as the, the threshold is to run it down.
Yeah, yeah.
So my question is relating to, um, how, uh, concerns such as Mr. Higa's concern may be provided to the Department of Planning Committee? If there is, um, and will they be able to make the, uh, neighbors aware of such comment period?
Yes, and, and they do, um, they do do that, they, they do typically get information. They're gonna start with the neighborhood board for sure, they're gonna see these minutes, they're gonna know that these comments were made. We aren't here to present to you and get any feedback you have and we have to document every single thing in our application. So they will be aware, they will reach out and ask questions. Um, I think the one comment was relating to the noise, uh, we understand that. And, um, you know, Allison is there, talking to the neighbors, so it's not like, you know, she's not talking to them. Um, she's present and, and is addressing things. Um, and I think it's maybe, you know, operationally, what time things are occurring, she did hear feedback, they turned on the music. Um, but just being there personally with the seniors, it really can't be a very loud environment because they have hearing issue or it's, it can be overstimulating. So I, I, you know, personally, this is, is individual, I felt like it was, it was a very relaxing place to be. But I appreciate the neighbor's concern and I think Allison is so good with working with her neighbors that, you know, we're happy to keep on talking, um, with a, a good solution that fits.
Thank you, the chair, I mean, Chair Potem.
Um, thank you guys very much, really appreciate it. Um, we're at a 15-minute mark right now. So if you wanna have a- So if you want to have any further questions, who would that, uh, so that'll, all right, thank you guys very much for.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
With that, and uh, this, yeah, close to the end, I'll get to you guys.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, so we're gonna move forward on this, um. Um, resident community concerns, uh, three minutes each. Uh, so if there's anybody who has uh any uh concerns, uh, you have three minutes. Please state your name first and then um as soon as you do that, the timer will be set. So, bro, if you want to come up here, state your name just to put a record, um.
Hi, thank you, April Batista. I live on Cool Holly Road. Um, I've lived there for like a year and a half. And I have these neighbors that throw parties, they drink. It is just so, it's really, they're really bad neighbors. Anyways, the situation is, I tried to talk to them because they park in our apartment lot. Um, and they got hostile with me. Two grown guys came at me with my newborn. Of course, I called the police and, you know, that's why I had thanked them. And, you know, I don't have an answer, but the situation is like, each time I come home, I get scared that something's gonna happen. I live by myself on the bottom floor. Um, the police officers, they give such good advice, but like, there has to be some sort of legislation. Again, I'm not sure if it's at the county, at the state level, but I shouldn't, I'm a renter, so I don't have that many protections. They own the home. Like, I don't think, you know, I work so hard. I don't think I should be that scared to go home every night. Um, yeah, so I'm just putting it out there. I don't expect an answer, but that's just happening. And like, people say Kalihii parking is hard, like, living in Kalihii is hard, like, everyone works hard.
Yeah.
And I don't think my neighbors, just because they own the block, and they bully so many people. Like, my apartment complex that I live in, mostly Filipino immigrants that own the place, they've told me that this neighbor just bullies everybody, and I don't think that's right. They threaten me saying, oh, I know cops too. Like, how scary is that? You know, and if, I just, there needs to be some kind of, again, I don't know. There needs to be something to happen because I'm pretty sure I'm not the only one that has suffered from bullied neighbors. Like, it's not fair. Um, I try to come home early. Like, that's how freaked out I am every night. I don't like coming home at night. Um, so that's the first one. The second one is, and if you're an elected official who represents my district, which is Kordero at the city level, Ganadin and Wakai, um, I have issues with the rental assistance. I was denied twice being an Alice family and the appeal. And a lot of that has to do, I'm gonna call this organization out, Catholic Charities of Hawaii. I have no problem calling them out on it. I'm very upset with how I was treated. They gaslit me, made me think that I did not submit my documents on time. Again, I'm not the only one that has been through this. This is the first time I've really even asked for help. Like, I've always worked so hard during college, two to three jobs at U H Manoa. Like, why? The way they spoke to me, again, I, I'm so frustrated. And this is from someone who's worked in state government for ten years. Some of you have recognized me. I worked for Carl Rhodes, I worked for Kordero, and I've also worked for the Office of Elections. I know what it's like to be a city administrator, not be elected. And government workers, as, you know, this is a service. Catholic charities, they're subcontracted by the city to expend the money. They also are doing a service. Again, I, if you're an elected official, you know my emails. I have CC'd everybody. You shouldn't be talking to people that are asking for help, that are working so hard to be treated like shit, like unexcusable. Senator Wakai has not once responded. I have no problem calling him out. Numerous emails, nothing. Thank you, Councilmember Kordero. Thank you, um, Representative Ganadin. They're the only ones who have checked up on me. And I want to put it out there that the State Ombudsman's Office is looking into the mayor's executive office of economic revitalization. I met with the two women in charge. They're great. That's why they're leaders. I have shared that if people can't do their jobs and they're older, either you listen, take some classes, or you step down and you train someone who's willing to do the work. Like, this is so upsetting. You know, this office, Catholic charities are the ones that reached out to me to apply after I said I was gonna get evicted. This started in April, I'm gonna wrap up. I started in June. I'm only getting help now. How many months is that? Again, we talk about wanting to do good housing and everything. I get it. Oh, I forgot to mention Lieutenant Governor Luke's office. Number one person responded to me two days. I have yet to hear from Governor Green. You know, okay, I'm a little bothered, but stuff's going on. Um, I just want to put it out there that something needs to happen because it shouldn't take me, someone who's familiar with government and how these things work, to get people to do their jobs. I don't think I have to get this angry for government administrators to do their jobs. Again, I want to thank the lawmakers that have helped me, Kordero, Ganadin, and Lieutenant, um, Sylvia Luke's office, and also the mayor's office. And I'm not talking, and I'm talking about the leaders, the director and deputy director, so thank you. I'm upset that there is no accountability, I'm wrapping up, accountability and transparency on how these subcontracted nonprofits aren't spending the money. Like, I have to go through so much just to get an answer. That's not right. And I think there needs to be legislation to show that accountability and transparency. Because I only did this because I have a baby, I'm at home, I have all the time in the world. I'm a first-time mom, I'm thirty-six. You know you'll do anything for your family, and I have grit and I'm very tenacious. And I'm not gonna end until there is legislation to, um, reflect some transparency and accountability for these government, um, workers. Again, they're not elected, they're hired. So unfortunately, although I like the people in charge, they're gonna have to get the brunt of this. And I will show up each time until I see something done. And I have meetings with the very respected officials, which I really appreciate. So again, thank you, Kordero, Ganadin, and, um, Luke. I am not happy with Senator Wakai, by the way. Not happy at all.
Thank you. Is there any other person?
Yeah.
You have Diane. Okay.
Diane.
Hi, can everybody hear me?
Yes, hi.
Hi, I'm Diane, and I'm Ganedia Una. I was invited here by cards. Thank you so much. And I just wanted to introduce myself. I'm from Academic Labor United. We are an organization of graduate students who are trying to support student workers among our ranks, and we want to give them workers' rights. So just for context, we are the students who teach the undergraduates at the University of Hawaii. We grade their papers, we tutor them in calculus. You know, we really, we work really hard to ensure our student success. And unfortunately, um, you know, it's really hard to do our job when we are worrying about making ends meet. You know, many graduate students, they go hungry, they can barely pay for rent or their insurance. And so, you know, we want our students to have a really good experience studying in the University of Hawaii at Manoa, and we want to be able to help prepare them for the future. So now I'm asking for your help, um, in supporting it as in our efforts to introduce a bill in the legislature next year to help us form a collective bargaining unit. So, thank you so much.
Alright, thank you. Um, Karz, if I'm gone, your three to three minutes?
Yeah, I just wanted to.
Diane, this is a, it's, sorry, three minutes, so if she's done, then your three minutes is gonna go.
That's fine.
Okay.
I just wanna thank everyone for presenting today. There's a lot of presenters. Um, yeah, and I also wanted to speak on behalf of, uh, Alu, Academic Labor United. Um, yeah, I did have many professors, or rather, instructors within the college. And many of them were very good, but they had to leave because obviously their G A ship was not enough to, you know, sustain them or pay them. And I do hope, I do, uh, you know, empathize with all the G A workers. It's crazy that you guys do so much and also trying to get their, you know, degree. But at the same time, you know, you can't get the right pay or get the right amount of like, uh, how do you say this? Like scholarships or aid to pay for your tuition and food. So, thank you for coming again. Can we write a, like, I'm just curious, can we write something for the education committee regarding that or, you know? Like a resolution?
There is no committee, is there?
Oh, there's no committees yet?
Yeah.
Is he on, we have to reform it?
They have to reform it, yeah. Reorganize that, uh, that, that total power.
No, um, you, you choose the officers is the only one that's, um, is.
But that, from that, those committees.
The other's established, we need some. Yes, established.
Right.
We finished that.
We didn't want to finish that, but that.
No worries, I'm done.
Yeah. Uh, is there anybody else? Okay, these are three minutes.
Okay, give me a warning, I have one. One minute, okay. Aloha, Angela Malia Young, presenting on behalf of Rural Rescue of Animal Rights, um, in grassroots. And actually, I am also a volunteer, hand up pastor now with Wildlife Goods, an international brand, uh, which works in helping, um, raise awareness about, uh, our planet's biodiversity and also animal conservation and paternity space. So, what is biodiversity? I'm gonna refer to a document from the State of Illinois Department of Natural Resources, Biodiversity Basics, a biodiversity education program. It was written in collaboration with World Wildlife Fund. And, uh, biodiversity is a variety of life on earth, right? So, we have a lot of animal, um, animal legislations that are going through the city and the state. There's probably, I'd probably see a lot of chickens in the city, its neighborhood. We live in Kalihii, and I rescue a lot of kitties, we trap a mutt of male cats. Um, we provide local care and have others that can host us. Um, and so the biodiversity of life is something scientists and botanists and animal conservationists um conversate with policy leaders to see, um, how we can manage and mitigate the impacts of natural life and, um, the, and how to be impacted, the negative impacts that the community concerns and bring up. So, um, in the, um, last month, we attended an acres species council. And that was, um, in Kailea, um, hosted by the city and the state. And, um, they talked about coconut rainwater respiteo. And the plan is eradication, right? Eradication is usually the, the solution. And eradication is just a nice way of saying. Yeah, so, that's. Uh, it's, at the end of the day, it's kind of like, the question is, there is a value of, of life. So, um, public policy, um, really, um, used to work with the animal conservationists. Um, and Congressman Ed Case, um, did work with the, uh, Big Tiger Act. And it was to protect tigers. So we can see that there is some solutions where, um, this, um, government does try to protect life. We can't.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, do you have any more?
I'll just share real quick, um, the booster thing, the city is, um, spearheading. I saw something recently about it, um, to do away with the boosters in public places on the streets and whatnot. Is that true? That there's, um, some sort of city?
Program?
Program to.
You can ask that on, when the mayor comes up.
Okay, I'll stop then.
Okay, so with that, we're just gonna move forward here, um, there is. State elected officials, uh, there's, uh, Senator Carl Rhodes. I think that there's only a report, but I could be wrong. Is it just a report?
Yes. Hello?
Somebody?
My name is Sarah Thorne. Unfortunately, Carl Rhodes has been able to attend tonight, but I am relaying his messages. I am the new legislative intern for him. Starting off, the red light safety program is now in effect in live for citations in multiple different locations. Um, last week, the Department of Health reported twelve hundred new COVID cases with a seven-day average of a hundred thirty-four cases and eight deaths. Not per day, but per total week. COVID nineteen remains the top ten causes of death in this country and has claimed the lives of more than one point one million Americans. Uh, I strongly encourage you to get your shots and boosters. A new shot should now be available, and I actually believe it's coming out next week, so I think next week it will be available. Uh, I also encourage you to wear your mask if you are at high risk or you live with someone who is at high risk. And we are having a resurgence. The virus is still circulating, so please get vaccinated. And with that, flu shots are now available. And with that, do not hesitate to call my office at eight oh eight five eight six six one three zero with any questions or concerns, or if you'd like, you can also email at sendroads@capital.hawaii.gov.
Okay.
And if anyone has any, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, we're gonna say, um, because for the sake of our times, um, we're gonna go ahead and say that if they have any, uh, think, the report, uh, and have the questions be sent to the contact that's on the report.
Yes, perfect.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Um, so, thank you guys very much. Um, Senator Nada Kim's office?
Good evening, everyone. Uh, we have sent out or distributed my, um, report. So hopefully I'll have it. If you haven't gotten one and you want one to send directly to you, you can email my office, sendkim@capital.hawaii.gov. First thing I want to touch upon is Community Wildfire Protection Plan. I know with everything that have gone on at, in Lahaina, other boards have asked me about a wildfire protection plan. And so we reached out to D L and R, and there is such a thing as a community wildfire protection plan. Unfortunately, our district have not put one together. And it is upon the community to get together to put this plan. And there is a deadline of October thirty-first for the next application uh, in order to come together as a community to put a plan together. So I hope that's something that the board will consider, wanting to take a lead on. Uh, you can go to hawaiiewildfire.org or to learn more about it. Uh, as far as our feral chicken population, you know, the Senate passed, um, or the legislature passed the current resolution ninety-two. We did have a working group requirement, and we did get that group together. We got D O A, D L and R, Department of Health, City of Honolulu, to come together, to come up with ideas as what we can do to start to mitigate the problem that is growing rapidly. And, um, I'm very hopeful that we're gonna have a good report come out and that the state is gonna be able to supplement the county's program and be able to supplement private residences to help them to get rid of a lot of the feral chickens in, on, in their yards. Also, on the Red Hill update, the C R I Oversight Group, as you know from the media, that they selected the ten members, civilian oversight group members, uh, to oversee the defueling. The Monala community are very disappointed that no one from the community or the surrounding area is on this working group or on this board. And so we're just hopeful that the members that are there are going to even consider what the residents around that area, um, are affected by it as well. And with that, I am going to, um, end, cause I know you're, uh, pressed for time. And if you do have questions, you can email my office or you can call my office.
Alright, thank you, Senator. Much appreciated. Um, Senator Glenn Wakai, I think that he just sent a report, correct?
Let's see anybody.
Okay. Um, they, they, no, that he sent a report to this, uh, yeah, uh, board. Uh, Representative Daniel Holt? Representative Sunny Ganadin? No, I know the governor's rep is, uh, wait, uh, the mayor's rep? Is it sir?
Yeah.
Good evening, the Cleveland Palabon neighborhood board. If this is, it has been Courtney, the mayor's representative and the deputy director for the Department of Information Technology. I'd like to, again, I would like to, um, make this quick. And I will start off with the, um, departmental issues, just to go through those from last month. I'd like to, again, I would like to um make this quick and I will start off with the um departmental issues and just to go through those from last month. Uh, the first one has to do with the signage, um, member Colin brought up. A request about installing no dumping signage on Mokaiia Street between Kahai Street and Silver Street. Uh, the Department of Transportation Services did respond back. And the city only installs no dumping or no trespassing signs on city property outside of the road right of way. It has been our experience that no dumping signs are not effective and often caused increased dumping at the sign location. DTS only installs standard traffic control signs along city road right of way. And the next issue has to do with the city property, does the city auction of unneeded city properties? Uh, the Department of Land Management responded disposals of unneeded city properties. Are processed pursuant to the revised ordinance of Honolulu, Chapter thirty-seven. And may be affected through various means including negotiated sale, auction, exchange, or by gift. There is no website for surplus properties, unfortunately. The next issue is in two parts, there was issue regards to squatter home and on Kalihii Street. Uh, Kalihii Street and Hoey Street. And also there was issue regards to a burnt home on uh nine thirty Akepo Lane. In regards to those two issues, it will have to, we have to retain this particular issues um for the next, uh, to be reported next month. Uh, it will be assigned to the Community Services Department to to address. Uh, the next issue has to do with Route One L, I get. Member Farm brought up that issue last month in regards to the um Route One L. Uh, DTS responded, Route One L and Route One both operate along King Street. Between the Kalihii Transit Center and downtown Honolulu. Route One L is a limited stop service and serves only selected bus stops along King Street. Route One provides regular service and service all bus stops along King Street. Therefore, riders who use bus stops not served by Route One L will use Route One. Having access to both limited stop and regular service routes benefits the community. In regards to a bus stop that was um removed, um, yeah. Member Farm raised issues in regards to the bus stop front in the storage facility on Dillonham Boulevard. That services Roots forty-two, nine, forty-three, fifty-one, and fifty-two without proper public notice. DTS responded, the eastbound bus stop located on Dillonham Boulevard, front in the storage facility is temporarily closed. And relocated further east to the area across from Akepo Lane due to the traffic lane adjustments. That were made between Ala Kawa Street and Akepo Lane to accommodate the current phase of the underground utility construction project. And lastly, the um member brought up the cost of operating skyline. For fiscal year twenty twenty-four, the annual budget for the rail is eighty-five million sixty-three thousand and twelve dollars. And other than that, I will just point um the neighborhood board in regards to um the mayor's newsletter, which can be found, um. I put, I placed it in the chat, um, but again, the mayor newsletter has other issues that are of interest to the public. And that can be found at www dot one Oahu dot org slash newsletter. And that's all I have for the City and County of Honolulu.
Okay, um, and if anybody wants to go ahead and send, um, I can see the information is under it, correct? Oh, you need to write it down?
Yeah.
You, so you need to write down issues?
Yeah.
For any issues? So is there any issues? Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, Hart Street, Waikamila Road replacement sewer project is now complete. Can the bike lanes be redrawn on uh Waikamila Road fronting four five four? Waikamila Road as it's being used as uh parking? The bike lane is being used as parking for four by four Waikamila. So it's a city, it's a.
I hate to interject, but I can speak to that in my report, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And then when it comes to the feral chicken with all this tax and rates going up, that might be. How I feed myself and my family, so. Seriously speaking, you know? Just had to say that, that's it.
Guys, you have something to say?
Yeah, um, yeah, about that chickens, uh, I just wanted to bring up that one person brought up with me today that she had a lot of like. Chicken problems where people have been making noise. But like it's not just chickens, but it's also the police, but that's on another level, but she mainly talked about the chickens at uh. Matsey Lane, Olive, Olive? Olive Lane?
Yeah.
Well, there we go.
Yeah.
Long Lane, I'm reading sleep crap right now, so and she says that the um. The noise mainly is coming from Long Lane. So she wanted to know if like, if these are like feral chickens or. If there's maybe like, you know, people raising them or gambling as cockfights.
Yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, now that I gave, but I gave her the info that City Council and the city has put upon already, so, yeah.
Just a quick picture. Um, do you have one thing?
Yeah, uh, hello Amanda. Um, I just wanted to mention again, it's kind of like the theme of every single neighborhood board meeting that I'm at too. For this portion I'm about to speak on is the tree is still overgrown and pushing into my property. I think this is now eight months and it hasn't been trimmed back yet. And I know I have done three-on-one app, I have called, I have done everything I'm supposed to do. And still, now the branches are grown over my roof. So it's not only impacting physically into the walls of the exterior of the house on the second floor, but now it has grown over on on top of the roof. So it's pretty extensive.
Okay, actually, I do remember you pointing that I thought that it was supposed to have been um. Uh, trimmed back from the last, I guess the response I did to get back. And so you're saying it hasn't been, it has not been completed?
Nothing.
Oh.
Still, still there.
Okay, let me um, it's actually, I do remember, I do remember that report coming in, so let me follow up on that one.
Thank you.
I thought it was, I thought, really, I thought it was done by now.
No.
Uh, you guys on that? Okay, um, okay.
Okay, I was just gonna say, I concur, I have seen and heard of the chicken fighting concern and that. I've, I had to rescue a chicken from a group of um Croatian boys. And so they told me stories about their uncle and uh so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I, I was just gonna say the Hoy Children and Youth Event, um, is something that the mayor was invited to, so I'm really looking forward to that. Um, because that's gonna be a celebration of, one, Hoy Children and Youth Award Show. Two, Hoy Children and Youth, the day, the fair at the City Frank Fosse grounds. And then three, the summit where the children get together across the state. So it's really a celebration of the children and the resources um to provide for that, yeah.
Okay, well, thank you, Angela, so uh my thing is real quick, uh. I, King Street's a very long street, so what we're saying, you know, in terms of the the coverage and where it stops. The only question I have, and I'll put this on record, is how many stops does the One L make in Kalihii Palama? Just using that from the length of for our district itself, just the neighborhood board of Kalihii Palama. How many stops does that uh bus actually make minus the transit center? That would be my question.
Okay, that, and that's for Route One L, okay.
That's the Route One L.
One L.
For which uh there's so much coverage on there because it goes on King Street. Um, King Street's very long, goes all the way from here all the way downtown. So.
Okay.
That's my question to DTS. Other than that, um, I know that everything else is on the report, so are you good?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much, uh, Stephen, much appreciated.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, council member, reading for Darrow?
I think Lynn's before me, but um I can go first if you want.
Please, please go ahead, I think you're next on the agenda.
Oh, yeah, okay, I apologize, I don't wanna mess us up, okay? First up, um, I would like to share uh the feral chicken cage and disposal service that was brought up today. Um, as was mentioned regarding the feral chickens, um, there was that program and so. For member Colin, uh, the information is uh could be found at sandwichisle.com. Uh, S A N D W I C H I L E dot com. Or calling eight oh eight four five six seven seven one six, once again, eight oh eight four five six seven seven one six. And this is relating to the city extending its cage and disposal service to private property owners. So once again, it's a feral chicken cage and disposal service. Uh, next up, I would like to, before I go into my report, I would like to provide some updates. Uh, board member Colin, uh, last month brought up the concern regarding the squatter home on one nine four Kalihii Street. We sent a riser to the Department of Planning and Permitting and we also upon further research found. That the, the property was also issued a notice of violation for as an abandoned house. We are currently still waiting for the response back from DPD, um, but we are also following up on what has occurred from that notice of violation as well. Next up, um, and I will also show you on my report is relating to, no, okay, I'll just share it. Um, is relating to the um. The faded lane markings as well as illegally parked vehicles on the Makai bound lane of Waikamila Road. Uh, we have made that request the day after the neighborhood board, um, and HPD did checks on from September twelve to nineteen. Um, on Waikamila Road and then again on twelve to fifteenth. Um, where verbal warnings were issued to the semi trucks that were illegally parked between Kalani and Hart Streets. Subsequently, um, more checks were made on the eighteenth to nineteenth. And um we request that, um, if you do see the semi truck, then illegally parking there, illegally parked vehicles there. Call nine one one immediately as they are, they have been doing frequent checks there. And if they are not there at the time that they are parked there, when you see them, just call right away. In response to the faded markings, DFM has initiated separate work requests to repaint the faded bike lane markings. And to also replace any missing or faded park restriction s- signs. So work will be formed, um, and we will, uh, DFM will advise, um, any concerns or issues, uh. Request that any concerns or issues be relayed to the uh department via email at dfmroads@honolulu.gov. Um, next, I would like to share uh that I am looking for someone to represent the city, um, our council district. On the Board of Water Supply Stakeholder Advisory Group. This is very important because not only um does my district include. Just our neighborhood board here in Kalihii Palama, but my district goes from Kapalama all the way to Waimalu Stream. And so you will be representing the council district there that also includes our community, our Kapukaki communities. Um, so the neigh, not neighborhood, excuse me, the Stakeholder Advisory Group meets quarterly, January, April, July, and October. The next meeting is on October nineteenth, so I would love to have someone from our community represent um our, our council district on there. Um, by the October nineteenth meeting, and so this, um, but the, if, even if you're not on the Stakeholder Advisory Group. It is also open to the public and they provide, um, I guess advisory information for their plans. And they were reported on, reported to for the rates as well and more, so was. To do so, you can email me at markcordero@honolulu.gov. Um, next, uh, for my report, I just wanted to uh share that, um, there is a We Are Kalihia event on October seventh. Um, that myself and council member Dos Santos Tam are participating in. And um that will, if you wish to become a vendor as well, um, at the resource fair, uh, please uh let. Kim Golis-Rabello know at um, um, at the email uh there by Friday, September twenty-two. And we hope to see you there on October seventh. Uh, next up, if you are a homeowner, um, I'm a renter myself, but um if you are a homeowner, the deadline to file for your home exemption. As well as any appeal, uh, any exemptions is Monday, October two, twenty twenty-three. We've had this on our reports for the last few months, so please be able to check it out, if you need more information, it's at realpropertyHonolulu.com. Uh, next up, I just wanna give a shout out to all the community things that have been occurring from our cleanups to our outreach events. But also just this past week, there was a grand opening of Shaw's, Shaw's Room at Farrington High School. So a huge shout out to the students, uh, to the Farrington Alumni Community Foundation as well as, um, just the whole community support. Uh, Shaw's Room where is an effort to allow for students to feel confident, um, and get uh. Affordable clothing uh from at Farrington, um, for interviews, um, college. And also even for capstones or presentations as well, uh, so, um, it, the bar job, uh, don't pieces go for more than five dollars. And so and a whole assemble could go for less than twenty dollars, so I just wanted to highlight that and, um. If you have any questions, please feel free to email me, rcordero@honolulu.gov or call my office, seven six eight five zero zero seven.
Thank you so much, thank you, thank you. Um. Yeah, you said it, yes, you said it.
Thank you.
And also thank you, um, um, board member Colin, I got your two emails, we can talk later, yeah? Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, council member, Talia Dos Santos Tam?
Aloha. Yep. Hi Chair, hi Board Members, Community Members, Lynn Robinson for Councilmember Dos Santos Tam. I will be very brief, um, happy to report after we submitted a riser that there's a work order that has been issued. To have um higher school zone fine signs installed around Kapalama Elementary School. Um, they also added that once they went out and did their inspection out there, DFM will also be replacing all the faded signs and striping. Within the school area. Um, also in collaboration with Board Member Colin and Vice Principal Hamilton. We um, we did get the, uh, we did submit a riser. For, to replace the no parking sign that should be out there, um, on Queen Emma Street fronting the middle school. So, um, a no parking from six thirty to eight thirty AM. Um, lastly, we are actively recruiting interns still for the fall and for the winter semester. So, um, we kicked off our intern program over the summer and had two delightful interns, um, from Kuna Ho and Farrington. Um, but all are welcome to apply. So I will, um, non-traditional students and any community member, um, we would love to have you. Come be a part of our dynamic, robust, um, team at the city council. So, um, I think that's all that I have and, um, in the, in the interest of time, I will. Uh, put in my contact information, so please reach out to me at, in the office if you have any other, um, community concerns. We're, we're here to help.
Thank you, Lynn. Wait, you're really pressed for time, sorry. Um, so for committee reports, there are committee, no committee reports, so. Hold on that. Uh, Community Resources, I'm just gonna read this thing out, City and County of Honolulu. Office of Climate Change, Sustainability and Resiliency, Resiliency Office is creating a long-term disaster recovery. And post-disaster mitigation plan, uh, along with. Um, they are uh links, so if you are uh seeing this agenda uh from online, then they should be clickable links. Um, that are on here. Uh, there's three, so if you have a chance for the community, please take advantage of that. Uh, announcements, uh, the next Kalihii Palama Neighborhood Board meeting will be scheduled on Wednesday, October eighth. Uh, at seven PM. Uh, Kalihii Palama Neighborhood Board recordings can be seen on Levelful, Channel forty-nine. Uh, or at www dot olevel dot org backslash live. At the times, first Monday of each month at nine PM, second and fourth of each Thursday, and eleven AM of each month. I just wanna say this really, uh, really short, I'm really glad when we have presentations where. They give a lot of time and understand that it takes a month for these things to come out. So if we can go and get those types of things where we have presentations that are relevant, even though we have on, on, when it's on TV. That's, I think it's really important, thank you all very much for tonight and we are journey.